Okay, we're ready to go.
Is it them?
Yes, it's theirs.
It's theirs.
They're in charge.
Are we ready?
Okay, you're ready to go.
Oh, we're ready. So you've already done the pledge, so.
No.
Thank you. So we'll jump right in here. We can do that, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, call the commissioners, be in order here then. We'll discuss this A R P, right? It's the main, main topic here this evening. So, where do we start? Can we start fire departments?
Fire departments?
Yeah.
Got that right here in front of us. Sounds good to me. Sound good to you two guys?
Yeah.
Yep, all right.
I think there's a couple of different proposals. I'm not sure what the commissioners are proposing, but my proposal, I think Chris has got one too. Let's just where I can read it. My proposal was trying to keep all the county fire departments over 100,000. Based on number of calls, money lost in COVID. I had come up with Madison Township 175,000, Rikers Ridge 160,000, Deputy 150,000, Hanover 140,000, Dupont 130, 130,000, Canaan 120,000, Kent 110,000, and Milton 100,000.
Would you go back over those again, Chris?
Which one?
All of them.
Okay. Madison Township 175,000.
Hold on, take, take, that gives time to write it down. 117,000?
175,000.
175,000, okay.
Rikers Ridge 160,000. Deputy 150,000. Hanover 140,000.
Hang on. Okay.
Dupont 130,000. Canaan 120,000. Kent 110,000. Milton Township 100,000. That comes up to a grand total, 1.1 million dollars. I'd also recommend that each of the city fire departments receive $25,000 each. Chris, you have yours.
So what was that? That's a total of county of 25,000 for the city?
Each fire department, 25,000.
Okay, but then what is the total of all?
The total would be 1.285. 100, 1 million 285,000.
Okay.
So a little over, sorry about that. Much as some just guidelines, right?
Somewhere to start. Chris has one?
Yeah.
Based on our discussion last, last month, it really, it closely matches what Ray offered there. Just I, I took the per, per council's kind of request to look at. Took the 25,000 from each one in the city and moved it over to to the county. Put a hundred thousand dollar base on each one of the county departments and then took the 25,000 across the six, 150,000, and divided that up based on the percentage of calls that each department did. My, my grand total on this one, not counting the the cities was, was 950,000, just on the counties. So it'd be 1.1 million overall, which I believe was the original total. And that, like I said, is very, it's similar to what Ray had there, but the range, the lowest one would be, I give you these numbers, but they're all out to sense, so I'm not gonna. But the, the lowest one would be 103, 103,812 dollars. And the highest one would be 158,493. But again, what it, what it is, I took the average of, of the last three years, the average number of calls. And then that total, or that average versus the total of those calls and then put that percentage of that 150,000 back into that department. So I figure any of the ones that have the higher call rates are, you know, they're spending more fuel and typically have more equipment to maintain and so forth. So that was a reason for the offset in the amount of money to them.
It makes sense if you're gonna, if you're having more calls, you're gonna have a lot more fuel and you're gonna have a lot more things to fix on your vehicle.
Correct.
Case, but yeah.
Yeah. More calls, more where you're getting on your turnout gear.
Maintenance, maintenance. I, I like the proposal, the fact that I, I mentioned last time that I felt like that the, the city down to the 25,000. I mean, that was, that was what I, you know. Did you get, Ray, did you ask the city what, any kind of calls for their, on their runs?
No, I only dealt with county.
Sarah, I know that you had the experience with farming. And as a sad thing to say that you had to have that, but give us your feeling on fire companies and your stuff.
I'm on the spot.
Well, I, I mean to, but I, I, I don't want you to get emotional, but I know that, that there was a lot of companies at that time.
Yeah, there was, I think there were six or seven companies at our house. And I think, I know one probably got the insurance money that is billed to our insurance company. And I don't know if, I personally don't agree with the call volumes because who knew that my house was gonna burn down? No one can really predict that. And then also the fact that, you know, yes, Madison Township was there so fast, but so was a fireman from Kent. He was literally just driving by and heard Dawson Smith. You know, I was, we lived on that road. So I mean, we literally had so many different fire companies show up. So I wouldn't want a fire company in Dupont to say, well, because I didn't get that, you know, enough as much money as someone else, then we just won't go to those calls anymore. Like, I don't want that to ever happen. But, I mean, there were so many people from different, you know, firehouses. So it's not just one firehouse should get more money than the other. I mean, they do all, you know, the same equipment costs the same amount for each department, I feel like. But, you know.
You know, the runs are, to an extent, are important. You know, it depends on where you're located and so forth.
Right.
And they got the base of 100,000.
Unfortunately, their equipment does not expire by how many runs they do.
Right.
It has to be maintained by year.
And you have, their insurance has to be paid, and everything has to be paid.
Basically, what we're trying to do is we took a hundred thousand dollar base, which was the original proposal on the table.
Right.
And then we added additional funds to that based on the runs.
Right.
Because for the runs, I've got wind and tear on their equipment, you know, fuel. Typically, the ones that have the higher turnouts have more equipment.
Right.
And the volunteer firefighters in the room, if any of you want to speak to that, please feel free.
You know, because I'm chief and I didn't deal with that more, particularly what she said. We do have, every county fire company has a, which makes it so different than the city. The city has each individual station with one truck. Each county company has anywhere four to five trucks to answer the grass fires. We have to tank in our own water. We have a pumper. We have medical vehicles. And I can understand where people might get a facade or whatever. With Madison Township's district, it is so unique because we sit outside the city limits. In order to keep ISO ratings down, we went to the, had to go to the extra expensive buying ladder truck. Which we did by duty, so new one is 1.2 million dollars. We bought a used one for 160 and we put $50,000 in it because Clifton Heights, Madison Chemical, Nucor, Madison Precision, Clifty Hotel in the park is ours. King's Daughter's Hospital is our, is our main responsibility. Plus, we're the only, what makes it also unique too, to that is that we have an automatic dispatch for any structure fire in five different jurisdictions. So we back up the city. Anything from Michigan Road north, we automatically respond to ladder truck and a pumper truck. If it's south of there, we automatically respond to ladder truck. Right now, for the past two weeks, we have been on standby for the city because their ladder trucks down. So we do cover that, but we also give automatic dispatch to Kent, Dupont, Hanover, Canaan. So, you know, we take all those, there's five. And on occasion, we actually cross the river to haul water for Milton, Kentucky. So when you take those expenses added into there, yes, it may seem that everybody has the same expense. Fire gear now, we just price new air packs that we'll have to go for a grand on somehow. When I started with fire service in 85, it was 750 dollars a piece. Now they are $9,000 a piece. That does not include the radio equipment. The radio equipment, just from my particular company, us and Rikers Ridge, came in at $92,000. So, I mean, yes, we experienced one of the highest calls. 239 of them last year. 160 or 170 the year before. 170 the year before that. Because we sit in the middle. We're kind of, I don't know how you'd say it. We're the ones that are gonna get dubbed to go to everything. Plus, we show up in numbers. Usually when we call, an extra resources for our district. And it's the same way with the other ones. It's for water, tankers, all that type of stuff. Even though as close as she lives to the city, guess what we was doing? We was hauling water. So, you know, fire gear now, just to buy coat and pants, unless you go cheap, just for coat and pants, two grand. Then we throw more emergency cameras that we buy, three grand. We also do, we also, you know, we just don't do fire. We don't do grass, just grass fires. We just don't do medical. We also go for CL detectors going off. So we have monitors to check all that. So when they do have a gas leak. Why would we go to one during the middle of summertime? People cook up gas. We've done, been on, within the past three or four weeks, we've been on four of them. So all that type of stuff costs on that. Then if we want to buy the helmets and the gloves, big boots. All that's about another $600. We had to have that go with the coat and pants, I mean, the fire gear. So you have to have all this type of stuff. Hoses, you're talking an inch and three quarter hose we pack a fire with in the fire department system. That's the minimum of $3 a foot. You had to have a minimum for one line, 150. So when you go to replace those hoses. Then when you talk about expenses, now we have all this equipment. Let's say we, we're just loaded up again with new equipment. Even with old equipment, we've managed to make our air packs last 20 years because we get them tested every year and get them repaired. But you have that expensive testing. You have those expenses of repair. Fire pants and coat, you can't really repair. Once you tear it or whatever, it's even no good. You have to throw it away, basically. So you have all that. Testing of ladders, you have to test every one of your ladders every year by a certified third-party system. We're lucky we team up with the city, a lot of county fire companies take that to reduce price. We still have that expense. Then you have to test all your hoses every year. You have to put them, you, it's just unimaginable that nobody realizes what we really do. So, I mean, as far as all the county fire companies, yeah, they are the same. Very much so. We're all still fighting fire. And they still answer the call. But, you know, all these expenses are high. So whatever help we can get and bank for, you know, we're not like, you know, the shares department where they're a public sector entity. They get tax dollars for all that. You know, when you go through and take the tax total of what fire departments get, it's not even a whistle to the shares department or EMS or whoever. We're out there fighting for every dollar we get to provide a public service. So when you look at all that, it doesn't understand all, all being equal. But, you know, there's, there's added expenses there. Plus, you have rescue calls. We spent 39 times over in the park last year. I'm working with D and R now by getting us a, a side-by-side or something. So that we can fight fire with it within the park or rescue somebody out of the park. Just probably two-thirds of those calls, if we'd had the right equipment, we could have loaded them up and had them out in half the time. But since we didn't have the right equipment, that takes long to. And you know how many times we got reimburse bills? Twice. One, well, I guess I count twice because one couple was so appreciative of us and said we treated them so nice that they gave us a donation twice of 450 dollars and they weren't even from this county. Other times, it was all on us. Then we just invested more new rope equipment. We just spent two grand on it. We talked about the Jaws of Life, Madison Township and Rikers Ridge just came up on Jaws of Life equipment. You got that expense. Hanover has full-fledged rescue equipment on their rescue truck. You know, they, they had the full jaws, everything we have. What we came to get, be person out if we have to. If we need additional, then we have to call it from the city or let the city, or, you know. So there's a lot of, of that stuff there that people really don't realize. You know, we're one of the biggest fundraisers in Jefferson County. For fire departments, I guess you would say. We lost 113,000 dollars in coke, because of COVID. Now, you know how much that hurts a budget? Everybody here still gets tax money, no matter what the situation is. So, but we, we lost 113. That, that's the bottom dollar. We do have that program going and we're putting money into that. And we have 12 cadets now that are between ages of 14 and 18 or 40. Because only fire department can get them prepped to come to that. But there's an expense for that. So everything we do is an expense.
Are any of those cadets taking advantage of the education program for being a volunteer and going on to the college for free?
To the ID tech.
No, because, you know, they have to graduate first.
Right, I mean, do they, are they planning on?
Yeah, what you're saying.
We're just now starting to get our first 18-year-olds through. So one of them actually went ahead and got her, she just received her E M T license. So she used that. And she's worked on nursing degree, plus helping out the patients. I think she's getting ready to turn in an application to be a full member. Because we can't allow them to actually fight fire, go inside a structure. They have to stay outside and, and I mean, it can be just kind of disheartening. All these other guy, you know, we get to go and fight fire and get cleansed, clean up the hoses and all these, but, so. But they're, they're troopers, they're, they're doing. So we, we are working, working with that. All the county companies are full-fledged in on it. The city would not go in on it. So county companies are taking in the full lineup. We're not, you wouldn't say, hey, just one. We're taking, we're taking on with the very challenge. And we're go, we're go try to get more people in.
The information certainly was helpful. And when Ray offered to gather some of that and then we also got additional extra requests and just five dollars from each department, that was extremely helpful. I don't think any of it necessarily surprised me, but it was helpful to see total budget. Obviously, we don't have the details of every single line item, but dollars lost and their fundraising efforts are at least seeing a comparison from 1920 and '21. And that wasn't a surprise to us, for sure. We all knew, just like other not-for-profits, they couldn't hold their end. Big annual bet, they normally brought in, you know, $50,000. They still had expenses there. And I know, Ray, the only, just based on like the number of calls and total budget, the only one that I had originally questioned with the dollar amount that you had suggested, deputies seemed high comparison, in comparison to the other requested amounts, suggested amounts, based on budget, calls and fundraising. But I also liked Chris's matrix and line of thinking as well.
I didn't have that until late, so I kind of had to speculate.
But I, but I think with deputies, they had a fire.
They're still recovering.
They had a fire and they were recovering from that fire. So they lost equip, they not, they lost their equipment along with the building, along with their turnout. So everything was in, it was everything that they had there, so yeah. So they were re-recovering, so.
I, I also thought Rikers budget, but it looks like, I wonder, this must include some building improvements because Rikers budget in comparison again, especially compared to Canaan. And then what Ray suggested, that $160 allocation for them also seemed high.
I think with Rikers, with one, I can give it on Rikers, I'll give you a little comment on that. They, E M A wants some locations, and part of the, they're wanting the money, extra money and stuff and everything. They're wanting, in case the community is hit, tornado, whatever. Say this building is in trouble here. Where can, they move to someplace away? And that might not be, there'd be several locations. They could go to Madison Township, they could go to Rikers Ridge. I think they could go to Hanover. I think the fire companies, they're trying to set up some things so that they can
Generator stuff to run.
They, they can go ahead and, they can work out of that. Then Troy and them should work right out of those buildings and everything, you know, for any emergency, anything that.
I also know that they had several firehouses willing to open up.
Absolutely.
When we had the, the forecasted ice storm last year.
Yes, yes, yes.
Didn't quite get, luckily as bad as.
Fortunately, we got past it.
As bad as we'd not, but
But that, but I think that's part of it.
Several stations ready to take people in if they needed.
Yes.
I guess one thing I didn't note in there, and I think it was when part of the request with us, is in order to keep, you know, the fumes down, and a lot of the county fire companies cannot do that, as far as what they call the ISO rating for the townships and being in the county and being in rural water and all that. One of the things within that, when they, when they do that, which I have been through ISO ratings since 1990. So it's been, I've been doing them a few times. And they're, they're pretty, pretty intense. And they're, one of the things that they do is they recognize NFPA. And under NFPA, it says you will replace your pumper every 25 years. And our pumper, Rikers Ridge actually has the older pumper and they couldn't do that. And with the new jail being built, it's down the street from the firehouse. A new pumper now is $640,000 with no equipment on it. And then you spend another 100,000 on top of that. We are in the process of putting out for bid for a new pumper to replace that because when we go to these other fires too, they'll see the backup pumper is. Us again, all five locations. Every one of them. There's been many times, I think I can truly say that Ron in my, he would know. He knows it's the most used pumper in the whole county. But it has never failed one fire in 25 years due to the care that we do. Send them off and give them, take care of them. And I think we're about the only ones that can say that because we, we've been able to run these funds to do the extra maintenance on it where the other fire companies cannot. But now we're gonna have a $640,000 expense that we're about to pay off also when we get the loan for that. That's pretty pricey. That's 16, 6,000 tiny figure interest a year. That's what we get from our township trustee. Rikers Ridge gets 66,000. So it wipes out any amount we can get from township trustee just for that one truck. So, any other questions on what it takes for a fire department to supply that?
I guess I'm curious, knowing that there's not a person that's running that is certainly not grateful and some have walked in that experience to know how that gratitude spills over. I guess I'm curious, based on just the general numbers that you all had proposed last month and then we kind of suggested, let's put a little meat to it. Two council members put some, some dollars on paper. What do you guys suggest based, I mean, what is your recommendation suggestion or questions for Chris or Ray based on the dollars that they requested? Taking the city and department's dollars?
Well, you know, we just received these, what, 15 minutes ago, 20 minutes ago? So I, we'll have to look at it. I, I think every, every fire company has to be ready. Whether they make 60 calls, whether they make 10 calls. So I, I have, I don't know why we're gonna all of a sudden make that dependent on how much money they get. You know, yes, all the stuff that Mr. Black talked about, they have to face. But so does Canaan, so does Deputy. I mean, they all have to go through that. Again, we're trying to help all of them because they all went through a time when they couldn't raise any funds. So if you want to take away from the city, I think Bobby said, you know, we do that. Take that 150, split it evenly between the county ones, makes 118,750, you know. But, you know, these other numbers we just, mm. Today, 20 minutes ago, so. I still, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that, once again, they all have to be ready.
I guess I look at it as, I'm on another organization that gives some emergency funding to the schools. Well, we've now included Canaan and Christian Academy as well. One Southwestern, Madison Schools and Prince of East, when they're, that's wonderful. We're able to give to all five. If we give an even amount to all five, the other side of the corner is gonna say, this school only has 32 total kids and this school system has, you know, 4,000 kids. So I, I think that's really why it was suggested last month.
It was suggested.
Yeah, that, you know, Canaan's budget, or Milton Township's budget may be this small, even though, yes, they have to be ready. And, and they do this many runs and their budget's small. And the fundraising efforts are small compared to Madison Township that may have a much larger budget. So I think that's just why it was suggested, you know, to look at some variable amounts to help those that may have a bigger budget with some bigger dollars if possible.
But just like those small schools, those fire companies struggle just like one doesn't struggle more than the other. They all struggle. And the smaller ones struggle more than the ones that have a little more finances. I just, I don't think it's fair to single, single them out.
So the, the school money, where, where does that come from or what?
I'm.
She was doing.
It's another fundraising group that I'm involved in that we take some of our fundraising dollars and give them to the schools for some emergency requests when a kid needs classes and can't pay for it and accounts are supposed to buy those. And that discussion has come up in the same, made me think of this discussion that, you know, hey, do we give like, you know, a couple hundred dollars to each school? Because this school's really small with only a few number of kids compared to the school system. Should we, you know, weigh it more based on how big the schools are? And that's simply, you got my line?
You're comparing comparison analogy.
Yeah, that's why I think many of us, you know, were going down that path last month when we began to look at these numbers.
I completely agree that they all have to be ready. But, you know, we're getting them to 100,000 that you originally had out there. But what we're trying to do is look at the ones that have the higher call volume. They've got the higher likelihood of having turnout gear tore up because they're out more frequently. Their, their equipment needs maintained more frequently. You know, their fuel costs are higher. That's what we're trying to look at, is try to help offset those costs. I mean, if you, I'm not trying to penalize anybody, but if you have 12, you know, 12 calls in a year versus, you know, 200, your likelihood, your, your costs are gonna be higher in trying to, you know, trying to keep a department up and going. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what anything, I mean, police department or otherwise, the more calls you have, the more your expenses rise. And I, I get it, they all have to be ready, but we're keeping the 100,000 dollar baseline that was originally intended.
I keep thinking too, we're definitely not penalizing any. What a blessing to be able to give. Six months ago, they didn't know they were getting any of this. So what a blessing. I, I know the money kind of sort of fall from the sky. And our nation's paying for us for it. But what a blessing to be able to use these funds in a positive way. So I look at it as a good thing, for sure. Not as, I don't look at it as penalizing some versus the others.
Well, some locations for runs, you would have more housing. You would have more, you know, the population. Like deputy wouldn't have, maybe, maybe you wouldn't have as much population as, as the Madison Township would have to run. But at the same time, they've got to have the same.
But a deputy or a Milton Township run would have more miles.
Say, that's exactly right, that was my next thing. They're gonna, they're gonna put out more of the gas, they're gonna put out more of the other thing.
They might not be going one mile down the road.
Exactly.
So.
I agree, I agree with that, that was, that's the same thing.
Speaking of being a volunteer fireman.
Yeah. I'll speak up.
Well.
Take your shirt off.
Yeah. I'll bear not do that. We discussed it kinda boom lowered on us today. Our, our supplier for our fish is probably going out of business because of diesel and the demand.
I saw it, you had to cancel, you had to cancel the fundraiser for this week.
No, we just moved it because of Friggers fireworks, but, but it's, but it's twofold. So now we're looking at something else that's going to jump in on all fire departments that have fish fries. The supply chain is getting whacked, I mean, we're, we're gonna have more. And right now, I look at this at, from, from a long time, started out in Madison Township, went to Clifton Six, and now I'm back at Canaan because I moved back out there. And I look at the fundraising that I've been involved with, started bingo up over there with these guys in Madison Township. It's a lot of work, and you put a lot of time into it. The worst thing about being a volunteer fireman is to show up at Mr. Gary Cook's house and, and you know he's still in there, you know, and you've lost him.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, that, that's when you don't want to be a volunteer fireman.
You don't want to, and you don't want to be a wife to volunteer firemen when they come home and they know.
You don't want to go in that house.
That's right, that's right.
So, but, but still, and now I'm sitting here looking at this and I'm thinking, I like that you kept it at a hundred for everybody because that's what we originally started out with. And you've taken the pains of Ray and Chris, you guys looked at, you know, the run and things like that. It, it doesn't bother me because what I first heard was you guys were looking to whack some fire comes. I even had fire companies call me and say, what are they cutting this for?
Which is so funny, all those things happening, there's certainly anybody in this room that wonder why they're planning.
I already heard, I already heard one person say, oh, we're only gonna get fifty. And I thought, whoa, I hadn't heard that. I mean, that's what's.
I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that, and I don't have a heart.
But rumors get started, and then they keep going, you know, they get bigger.
So when I came in here tonight, I was kinda like, I had my gun loaded, but I don't have a gun, good day. You cut us down again, you know.
I knew you were looking for a reason.
No, but, you know, and Bobby's been a volunteer fireman, and these two gentlemen have served our country, so we, we know, sitting on this table, you know, it's a gift, the ARP money's a gift. And, you know, we just want, we just want to use it, do it, and spread it right to as much as you all do. So I think this, this time of not arguing or debating, but discussing how to, how to use these funds, I think it's, to me, it's very encouraging. I'm like Robert, I know what it is, a volunteer fireman, to, to work these. We took, we took money out of our own pocket last year to pay our turnout gear because we weren't having fish fries. You know, this is what you do. And, but, you know, not bragging about it or gracking about it, that's just what you do. So I'm.
I'm gonna say something on that. I saw, I saw an article the other day and it said, a volunteer fireman is spending four ninety-nine, that was the time, at the time, for gas, for gas, four ninety-nine a gallon for gas, to go to help somebody else, and they're not being paid, and they're not, and their, their time's not being reimbursed or anything, and they're also using their own fuel to get to the fire truck, to get to where they need to go. And I thought, that's.
And the training that we go through.
And the training that they have to go through and everything, that's, you have, you know, I'm glad we, I'm glad that we have in the county, all the fire departments we do have, and the volunteers that, the volunteers that have stepped up to the plate all these years and saying, just like Sarah said, they were there, they were there to help her in any way and help them in any way that could possibly help that night, whether they were hauling water or whether they were, they were running the hose or whether they were, what they were doing, they were there. You know, so I, I think, I think the firemen should be protected too, you know, all of them.
So going back Dave, you need some more time to think about it.
I'd like, I didn't write Chris's numbers down, so if you have, can you send those to us?
I have it written down, if you will look at them.
I'd like to write it down, so.
Not much different than that.
They're not. Oh wait, those Ray's numbers.
I can, I can read them if you like. So, and I'm just going in the order they run the sheet. So Milton, one hundred, three thousand, eight, twelve. And I'll just leave the cents off for right now. Canaan, one hundred and seventeen thousand and seventeen dollars. Dupont, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Hanover, one twenty-seven, three forty. Kent, one oh eight, eight thirty-four. Township, one fifty-eight, four ninety-three. Rikers Ridge, one eleven, five thirty-one. And Deputy, one oh four, three seven zero. Just as an example, deputies there, they, they average fifteen point seven calls over the last three years, but they averaged three years, which is three percent of the calls that the county, for that average year.
Acknowledge what Dave mentioned, and just that they're thinking, give everybody the one hundred thousand, the original proposal that was put out last year. Probably between Chris's proposal and Ray's, Chris is a little more in line with, you know, a little more black and white. Obviously raising the distribution far beyond what was originally proposed last month. Ray's is based, a little more variable based on the additional factors, the proposal that they asked for, the budget, et cetera. So I guess hoping to come to an agreement. I, I would, and I, I would entertain a motion that we move forward, shifting all of these companies, the dollars that Ray, excuse me, the dollars that Chris suggested, and giving each city company twenty-five thousand dollars even.
I would concur with that.
And guys and gals, if the money was there, I'd love to give every fire department a million dollars. They need it, they really do, but unfortunately, we, we have to. Oh, we start sitting on the couch and. Gets too comfortable. No, I truly appreciate each and every volunteer fire department in this community and everywhere as far as that goes. It, it's still amazing here, here in, you know, two thousand twenty-two, that we have such a great group of people that are willing to come out and do that. Truly appreciate it, they're very, very important to this community.
Thank you to both Chris and Ray for working on that this last month and getting those numbers. I appreciate it.
I, I want to throw something out, Ken, because they have not had the, they have not had the opportunity and, and we to look at this amount either too, that if we would make the motion, I'm not making a motion, I'm just, this is a discussion because you've got a motion, a second on the floor. At, through the discussion, that they at least would receive the hundred thousand and the twenty-five thousand for all the fire companies now, and then leave, so we, on some discuss, more, so we could discuss it, maybe more. That's just, I'm just throwing that out, I mean, I'm not saying that we should or we shouldn't. I'm just saying that if they want, if, as the commissioners want to have more time to look at this and so forth, that at least that we would approve the hundred thousand for each one of them and the twenty-five thousand for the, for the city for the time being. But that was just my thought, but I, I, I think either, either amount would be, I would go, I would go along with it, you know. Because it's more than, it's more than what they're expecting, they're expecting a hundred, they're, I want to say expecting, they're hoping for the hundred thousand.
They're expecting.
Well, probably so, I want the whole, not, anticipation. You know, anticipation, you know, and with it, that, that, that was, that's just not, you know, I know that, that's putting you guys, because you, you didn't see it, we didn't see it in these either, you know, either of the proposals either, other than that. But I do think that each one of those fire companies are hurting, and the hundred thousand would go a long way to start them out. And, you know, so that.
So is that your motion?
Well, I can't make a motion because there's one on the floor, this was a discussion.
And my only thought comes to that is.
And she had a sentence, so that's why I didn't, that was, that was, that was just under the discussion. Right, you know.
And my only thought to that is, that's another round of checks that have to be written. They, they certainly can get these monies in their account and start planning future fundraisers and how they're going to spend these dollars. And if this group of ten people wants to come back yet again next month to hash out these dollars again, that's fine. But knowing that everyone is going to be receiving above and beyond a hundred thousand.
That's what I'm saying, you know.
I prefer to see us get those dollars this evening.
Anyway, we have a motion and a second.
And, and the motion is for the lower amounts, for the, what's Chris's amount?
Chris's amount.
Chris's amount, okay.
And twenty, twenty-five thousand for each of the city.
Yes, city, with the, yes.
Totalling one point one million.
All in favor? How it's up to the commissioners to decide what you want to do with it.
That's to advertise.
That's to be advertised, that's to be advertised, then we had to print, but this is to be advertised. Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Like I said, if we go another month and they won't get it, well.
Well, that's, that, other than, than I was suggesting, the hundred thousand to start with on that, but that's fine, that would be fine.
Okay, so I will make an advertisement for one point one million for fire assistance.
So how, for one point one?
No, that's not right.
No, that won't be right, that won't be right. That, you've got to add these up, you've got to add these up, all these up. Yeah, because.
It's one point one.
Is it one point one?
Is it come back, one point one count, that's twenty-five thousand.
Chris's numbers is like nine forty-nine, nine ninety-five, so you're five dollars.
Five dollars.
Oh, I'll throw the, I'll throw the change in on the.
So the whole, the whole amount including the twenty-five thousand? Or either the city ones is, is one point one bay in?
Correct. Yeah, the total amount of dollars didn't change in that, that group. What else did we have on, Sarah, do we have anything else on the joint card here?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Do we have to decide if we're gonna, do we have to vote on that or, no, we don't have to vote?
Well, they, they.
You can't if you want.
Yeah.
So that was, they agreed to advertise that amount of money. Are you guys?
So you advertised the other last time, right?
I did not.
No.
Fire was excluded.
No, I meant the others in that category.
Yes.
Yes. Everything else has already been voted on in that area.
The charities, festivals.
Neville's Grove, Chelsea, Canaan Bowl Festival, Habitat for Humanity, and then the lump sum of two hundred thousand for additional not-for-profits.
Right, and that was approved tonight.
And all that, yeah.
As you, yeah, that's what you all proposed last month.
Everything was approved except for the fire and the JPG.
Yeah.
And really, the checks could be written, so to speak, for Neville's, Chelsea, Canaan, and Habitat. Obviously, just working to put a spend in place, but it's really not a lot different than other not-for-profits coming to you all in the past saying, we have a need for, for this big project, and we have, you know, you have fifteen thousand dollars. It's just now that we have an additional two hundred thousand dollars for the not-for-profits. For requests to come directly to, they come to the commissioners first.
All right.
So what kind of balance are we, are we talking, because we read into, oh, we need to go back, because we were going to discuss with them, we need to go back on the water, the water, you wanted to add? Because we, on, on, on the amount of water, because you said, we, we approved the two, rating three hundred and twenty thousand, but you thought we should add?
Add some to the three local.
Because that was, it was, it was.
If they would consider that.
Go back to whatever there was originally, I don't have.
After this next round of advertisements, would it be beneficial if we listed everything that was appropriated now and then the balance to move forward with initial?
So then we would know in July, yes.
And then go back to that.
Yeah. I was gonna say, it was, it wasn't a whole lot.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it was like deal.
Eighty thousand dollar difference.
It was eighty, it was eighty, it was eighty thousand dollars difference.
It's recommended that we leave an amount. Right, okay.
Eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, good. It's recommended that we leave an amount because.
Did you advertise the water company and the sheriffs and the rest and all that stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, that was last time we approved the advertisement, and everything I advertised, they approved tonight in our meeting.
But we did this, but Pam, we did discuss that, that maybe the, on the water, whether did you want it to, a little bit more, go back to what they had originally?
Uh, the entire amount, and then take that and maybe spread that amongst Rikers Ridge, Canaan, and Dupont.
What was, the original, the original proposal was more than the two, varying three twenty.
It was like two point four, was it?
Two point four.
Yes, thank you.
Two point four.
I was looking for the original.
Eighty thousand difference.
Eight seventy-five for the city, Dupont was three seventy-five, Kent two twenty-five, Canaan one fifty, Rikers Ridge one hundred, Hanover two fifty, and Stormwater Management and Broadband were.
It was two point four million, and I was hoping to take that, because it's two point three now, and to take that, extra hundred thousand and split it.
Eighty thousand, eighty, eighty thousand and split it.
Eighty thousand and split it amongst Rikers Ridge, Canaan, and Dupont. Since those were the three that were lower.
The lower ones.
Well, I mean, so we did the same thing you guys did on the fire companies.
I know you did.
And now we're gonna go back to it.
I know you did, I know you did.
If I give, I want, I want some give, okay? If I, if I give, I want some give, just to be clear and you understand where we're going.
Ken, if it's okay, I feel like there's a little confusion in the room. What was in even our previous meeting minutes from May was approved. And, yes, was, the motion was made and approved this evening. The dollar amounts, the council approved were one million to the City of Madison, three hundred and seventy-five thousand to Kent, one sixty to Dupont, one fifty to Canaan, one thirty-five to Rikers, one hundred to Hanover, and then the two fifty for the Stormwater Management Study and one fifty to Broadband Bats and Grant Funds. And this body, the council, approved that this evening. And then Pam sent, we went, just so that we wouldn't delay that yet another month. And then Pam's request, am I stating this correct, is that, let's take a look then if those additional allocated dollars are there, let's see how we can potentially make an additional.
Increase.
Increase to, additional, that would be. Yeah, it'd have to be.
But maybe, maybe we need to leave that off until we find out exactly where we are.
Right, right.
In other words, leave it at the two, two, nine, three twenty, and the eight thousand hold on the after one. Do, and maybe we need necessary someplace else.
I know we had originally, you had originally requested a budget line item for that, where water was two point four million. So I'm just saying, if you have the eighty thousand left, consider, you know, those companies that were decreased. I would like to consider taking that eighty thousand, if we have it, and spreading it amongst those ones that we decreased. That's all I'm asking.
I mean, I, when, when we went through the initial numbers, we did have like a hundred and eighty-four, six eighty-two left over, but that was because we were told to have some in the reserve, so.
So just saying, I would like to look at that.
And, and this doesn't all have to come down, you haven't told.
Sure. Sure. No, I have a little. I mean, it is there, I mean, but the reason those numbers changed is we got numbers for those companies that had customers just, that had just the Jefferson County customers rather than taking into account Switzerland or whatever. So that's why they changed, but.
Right, right.
And I guess.
And also, those numbers might be skewed a little bit more because we had not taken the FICA expense, the actual dollar amount of that. So that's even more that has came off on the premium pay side.
So maybe we need to, if you give us a whole list of exactly what we have said we're spent, are going to spend in July, then we'll know what the balance is.
And that makes sense. One question for the commissioners and I guess the council too. Obviously, we are gifting these dollars, trusting these governing bodies to spend these dollars. So when we just voted on what we were going to give the fire companies, we didn't say it has, they can't go for a new truck, it has to go for gear. Obviously, we're just gifting those dollars. Same thing for the, for the water companies. We're gifting those dollars. We're not putting a, it has to be spent on blah, blah, blah. Am I correct?
Yes. But I think it would be good to have them turn in an invoice or support their own something.
I was gonna say that.
But there are requirements they're gonna need to fulfill in spending it, but we haven't said, this is what they have to spend it on.
No guidelines, but we are gonna give guidelines.
Well, like I know some of. The process in which they go through has to be something that the State Board of Accounts.
Counts will approve.
Would approve. Hey, I know Joe, he'll dig a ditch over here.
Let's ask him, yeah. I think if they turn in, it's just like we requested, like for the vests and the stuff from the jail, you know, or that on that, that we do, you'll need invoices. So you're gonna need some sort of invoices. Are you not approved to the ARP?
Right, we will, I'm assuming we will just keep, they need to turn in the invoices of everything they have spent.
So that would totally.
Totally that amount that we have funded them.
And I guess I just, maybe I just assumed that. Because obviously, there has to be checks and balances.
I'm just making sure we weren't.
Yeah, I meant for like, for example, the gifted not-for-profit dollars, you know, we tell the Boys and Girls Club that they can use it for a summer field trip. But we tell Girls Incorporated they can't use theirs for a summer field trip. I guess I just, we're giving them the funding, certainly, again, with checks and balances and process and documentation has to be turned in. But there's no stipulation or hanging branch that says the money has to be used this way, that way.
And then we even go back to what we, on the nonprofit, like the Neville's Grove and Chelsea and stuff and things, they're going to have to reduce back to us or to the State Board of Accounts for you to have in your little folder, you know, and everything that you couldn't spend it on.
Here's a good question. Josh Taylor has the best invoice and the tasers. So can he go ahead and trip the trigger on this tonight then?
Yes.
Yes.
So then he would hand you the invoice for seventy-two thousand or whatever.
Which this was approved, right?
Yes, Kristen can make that check the next time we have a commissioner's meeting.
But the other needs to be a good checks and balance.
Amen, Jesus.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing, if we just approved the balance, which is in the building, there's three hundred that we approved tonight. But we got to find, we never decided where that she was gonna have to advertise that other was gonna come from. And we better.
But we can't do it now.
We can't do it here.
We can't, we can't do it.
There's a lot in this.
Can we, can we, it can't, it can't be proved either way. But she's gonna have to advertise someplace for that other, the other amount, the hundred thousand. Because we've approved the three hundred here. We already did that tonight. So we've got three hundred of it, but we've got to find the hundred, we've got to figure out, and tell her what to.
Where to get it.
The only thing it could, and. If you're gonna advertise.
How much? Seventy-five.
One eighty, Dave.
Because seventy-five thousand that will be.
One eighty and that left a hundred.
Sounds like an auctioneer.
Yeah, no, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to come back up with the hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
But we didn't decide in our, in our meeting where you were supposed to advertise.
Right, bad check.
You can submit and we can still submit the advertisement later.
Can we take that? We could at the next meeting, when we take that from the ready day fund at the time.
That's what I was suggesting.
And I'll take it from the ready day fund and then you advertise.
It looks part of my ass.
I think Abby can still, just as if a department were to submit an advertisement to me throughout the month or the July meeting. I can do that after the meeting.
You can still do that.
Yeah, I still have plenty of time to advertise.
Okay, and I just wanted to be sure that we were all gonna get.
So we, there's two hundred and fifty there at the bottom of that next, the last group, actually grants. So if we could use that for the building and then re.
And reimburse ourselves?
Once you have, well, once you have time to.
I think we'll have plenty of time.
To go through all that.
Woo, okay. Well, I just want to be sure we're gonna be okay with this.
Yeah, we will.
We'll give them three hundred thousand in IOY. For the government, come on.
Troy worked for us. Well, that probably. Only three quarters of your building.
Maybe not.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
I'm gonna sweat. Okay, where are we at?
I don't know. It's Ron's, it's Ron's meeting.
Are we back to the, now to the JPG?
I think that's the last thing, isn't it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I sent everyone the information out of their proposal on what they were gonna cover. Chris had asked for more, so I sent them all of their proposals. So if anyone else wants that, I can give you an electronic copy. But we have had some discussion with the RDA. We might be able to get some funds through the RDA for a project. Initially said three hundred thousand, but once I cross the two hundred and fifty thousand, I enter a realm of some federal regulations that I'm not really sure I want to go into. So I may ask for just two hundred and fifty thousand, if that's okay, rather than the three hundred thousand. And that way I don't have to, you know, I've heard a little bit about what I have to do, but it's not. Anyway, but, you know, I've talked to the new railroad director. He thinks it's a good idea. I've talked to the economic development director at the city. He thinks it's a good idea. I understand it's a lot of money. We just have an opportunity with what we have here to look at this stuff to see, will it be useful? And I know what we think, well, maybe not air, maybe not air. There is not many places that have the rail capacity and now, like I said, we have a rail director who wants to use the rail, he wants to get involved in using the rail. We have the roads and then two, I know it's still a maybe, but the connector between seventy-four and seventy-one that's going in. We're in a position that with all the intermodal, and I'll throw in the river too, because who knows what that holds. But there's a lot of things that are gonna have to be looked at when the price of diesel is what it is. Okay, so we're gonna go on a boat, we're gonna put a barge that's carrying fifteen hundred tons of stuff as opposed to twenty-five tons of stuff. Rail car is. Anyway, so, but, so, you know, as the proposal said, do kind of what's out there? What conditions are in with the environment? I like the Army's known for taking care of things. Unfortunately, they're not. And then what, what markets are out there? They talk about the air cargo and intermodal, so air and rail and truck. Is it a maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility? And I know people think, well, the runways are too short, but they have to do maintenance on the regional jet somewhere. These runways are running five thousand feet, so that's an opportunity there. I don't know if you saw the study or the article that just came out, sorry, not a study. FedEx is purchasing a number of electric cargo planes and to take them around. So I would say very little improvement on the runway would be needed, but there are, there are a lot of things happening in that realm with the electric. A taxi service, want to take a taxi service to the airport? Park it at JPG and just get one to, where do you want to go? I mean, it's closer to Louisville, but could you go to Indianapolis? Could you go to Cincinnati without ever to drive there? I mean, I know you think, well, that's pretty far-fetched. Well, yeah, it may be, but it's common. Do we want to be part of it? Do we want to have an opportunity maybe to use the asset that unfortunately, none of our fault, but our county was probably one of the few, if not the only one, that didn't receive the Army property that was around and now we have an opportunity, let's go find out what we can do with it. Yeah, we could do a high level thing, but if this is gonna come up with a plan based on these assessments, what are our next steps? And then we go back to the RDA. Because the improvements that have to happen at the airport, we're not gonna pay for them. I mean, it's gotta come from an RDA kinda ready kinda grant. That's where these kind of things are gonna come from. And the Indianapolis Airport is having to redo their runway, I think after ten years, far sooner than they expected at some huge price. But because of all the FedEx traffic, I don't know, some of these guys are gonna start looking at other airports, having their own airport to run that. Amazon, you hear that, but is Amazon gonna be one that has its own airport? I don't know, but we won't know until we do some sort of study. And that's my, my thought on why it's a, it's a time when, while it is a lot of money, we won't have this kind of money ever again to do anything like this. Or at least not in our foreseeable future. I don't know, it depends on whether the government will come back and help another load on us. Anyway, so, so didn't get any questions back on their scope? I mean, is there any questions about what they're planning to do, what they, any comments on that?
I attended a meeting out at the Madison Municipal Airport last month, which all the council members were invited to. And I spoke to Dick Goodman and several of the board members out there. And they had a nice PowerPoint presentation that was presented and made for the council members. And I don't know if anyone received that, that PowerPoint presentation. It opened my eyes to, and I actually have had several people come to me at my office and also call me about their feelings about a study and the money that we were going to put towards that project out there and their concerns. One of the things that had been brought to my attention is that there was a study of that airport fifteen years ago, which I, I didn't even pay attention to those things fifteen years ago. But they said that there was a study that had been done about the viability of that airport and the use of it. Because fifteen years ago, the county really was focusing on what can we do with JPG? How can we utilize it within the county? There's a lot of property out there that potentially we could use and maybe make it viable for Jefferson County, which, you know, is an interest to me. But they didn't see any use for that actual facility due to the degradation of the, and the deterioration of the facility itself. The airport landing strip, the money that was going to have to be put into that facility to bring it up to code. To bring the landing strip up to code to land any cargo carriers of any sort. Also, due to any type of planes trying to land in there and trying to get the, the Air Force or the, what is it?
Aerospace.
Aerospace, just trying to get the clearance to land in there, any cargo carriers of any size to land in that airport. Was going to be surmountable to try to go through that process was going to be a huge, you know, it just wasn't going to get done. And also, the extension of the runway out here at the Madison Municipal Airport just to get that small radius that they needed to get that clearance themselves, it took a huge tackle, Dick Goodman said, to get that. The other thing to think about is DHL out of Dayton is very close for us to even think that we would get any type of cargo coming into Madison Airport or this other airport. I don't, I don't know why would we think that anybody would ship things into when we've got DHL and you've got UPS Hub in Louisville, we've got DHO in Dayton. Why would they ship anything into, I don't know, Madison? The other thing is, what type of runway are you going to have to build a landing strip into an airport to have an impact? When you're landing a huge, heavy cargo carrier into an airport, you have to have an impact. When you're landing a heavy plane in on two wheels or four wheels, I mean, you know, you're thinking of a sixteen miller carrying huge cargo. But when you're landing something in a huge rate of speed, you have to have a long strip, of course, but you also have to think about impact. So what you have out there currently is not, you're gonna have to dig all that up and.
Well, you say that.
You're millions and millions of dollars.
You don't know that. I mean, the Army built it or the Department of Defense.
Have you seen the condition of the current concrete?
Yeah, it needs help. I understand that.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to dig that up. Do you know the millions and millions of dollars and who's gonna pay for that? I mean, is it gonna come back to the Jefferson County taxpayers eventually to keep that? I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean.
Well, I wonder, why, could you have sent us the presentation?
We can get that from, from the Madison Municipal Airport, yeah, we can get that from them. Yeah, absolutely, we can get that from them.
Because I haven't seen it. They have the report that was done fifteen years ago?
Oh, absolutely, they do.
They do?
Yeah, well, I'd love to share it with you and I will get that tomorrow and share that with you. And I think you would love to see it.
We give all this stuff upfront and we get here to a meeting and then it's like, here you go, make up your mind.
Yeah, well, that's what, you know, I, yeah, I will get that before you. Yeah.
I mean, that's a little worse.
Yeah, is this, I didn't know anything about this. Is this November two thousand and four?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's it.
And this is more, this is from the United States Army and this is more the declaration of, appears to be, obviously, it's one hundred and seventy-five pages. And I just snapped it. I just was curious when you said about fifteen years ago, they did another study. I hadn't, never heard of that. It does not appear that this is really a study of what could be done with JPG property.
There was on the airport.
There was that the airport.
Right, right.
Oh, I thought you said it was, I thought you said it was a study already fifteen years ago about the purring ground.
Well, I think they encompassed the airport on it. The county was doing a study on it, on the viability of those properties.
This is not a county study, this is a.
I think that's.
No, I don't think that's a county study. I don't think it is.
Did they not?
I don't remember them doing it.
Okay.
I don't remember doing the study.
But we have the PowerPoint and I would love to, I can get that from Dick Goodman and share it with you. So, yeah, it was very enlightening.
Did they do, how did they come up with that?
How did they come up with?
The information they put in the presentation.
It's a compiled information that they have from several resources that they have from, they have the, a retired pilot that they have on board. They have Dick Goodman, they have a former council member on the board, several, several.
So someone went and looked up this information?
Yes.
They did?
Yes, they have aerial pictures, yes.
So they did a, they did a market analysis?
They didn't do a market analysis. They're not gonna look that up and they're not gonna pay to do a market analysis.
So we shouldn't? That's gonna be the end game? That we just, we shouldn't do anything more to look at this to see if there's any possibility?
I'm just going by logic, you know, do you want to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to put on something that's, they can come up with just basic facts that has, they have pulled together pieces of information that have compiled over the years? That they can go historical facts and aerial facts that they have compiled for you? Or do you want, I mean, what do you want?
Well, I'm gonna see if there's any markets out there where that property would be, could be used for.
Okay, I, I, are you wanting to look at specifically the airport?
Well, the airport? I mean, this, the presentation of the proposal. I mean, this, the presentation or the proposal does not limit it to just the airport. The airport's there, sure, but it also talks about rail. It also talks about cargo in the intermodal with the vehicles, so.
And I have to admit, based on the information you sent back, I think this email was June 7th, I read all this and I wanted to pull it up in front of me because I thought, oh, there were... What first struck me is there were more sections of the study than I, than I thought there would be. You know, originally, we were heard. And again, you know, our jobs ask questions, that we want to spend $500,000 to see if JPG can hold an airport. When right away, people, well, we already have an airport in town. So I was impressed by this information and the fact that they're similar to what Kevin Kellum said. You know, do we have a treasure that we could utilize more than just, you know, potential airstrip? And, you know, I've never been in charge of a huge assessment like this. But, I mean, I was pretty impressed by some of the things they were going to be looking at. You know, the half a million dollars is very, very hard to swallow on. The fact that you potentially, we may have an opportunity to obtain half of that even through other available funding is appealing. And then I guess for me, the only other thing too is still, at what point we know for sure how much this would cost? Because we had $500,000 in my head, because that's what you guys decided, well, let's go and put that line item. Because we were putting, you know, soft dollars together for this ARP proposal. Now, if we scrutinize even more detail, like at what point can we get a firm quote? To say, you know, we guessed $500,000, but what if it truly is only going to cost $325,000? And we may have an idea, we may have an opportunity to actually get $250,000 of that.
Sure.
Then there might be a little more, it may be a little softer blow to take. We may have an idea what it's going to cost me to build my dream home, but, you know, once I've really moved forward, I'm ready to get two quotes to see truly what it's going to cost. I just didn't know what it would cost to get an actual...
Well, I don't think it would cost us anything. It may cost us a couple of weeks because, you know, we've been talking to them because we had to have some dollar figures to go to the RDA to apply for funding there. So, and so they did a pretty wide net. And so, but they're still working on refining what the study would be, the cost of it would be.
I myself, I mean, when we came into the meeting a month ago, I was hesitant, you know, unlike Heather, I saw the $500,000, I was like, man. Then once you explained what it encompassed, anything that JPG could use for, that's kind of intriguing.
Well, you know, I'm not saying it's not intriguing. And I'm not saying it's, you know, something that, if it would work, you know, I just don't feel like, I feel like we could use $500,000 in a lot of other areas and let, and let this go right now.
Well, you often, you often talk about River Ridge. They didn't do, you know, they did a study down there before they could ever do anything.
Well, that's, that's true, that's true. And I'm not saying that you don't have to have studies. But a half a million could really help us in a lot of areas in the county. That's my opinion, and I'm taken to it. But, you know, I appreciate the scope of where you went and the possibilities. To me, it looks like a gamble.
Yeah, but you won't know if it's a gamble or not until you do some sort of study. If we don't do anything, there's a gamble. I mean, once again, what race is? I mean, who would have thought, even with, probably with the study that they did at River Ridge, that it was going to do what it was done? I mean, if there's some genius down there, I'm going to go down and tap his brain because...
Yeah, and the number of years that you go, had gone past that, nothing, nothing was done in that, in that area at all. And then one, then they, I know they had the study and one thing developed and then another thing developed and another, and that's what Kevin was saying when he was here.
And there's been a lot of discussion, if we didn't have the money, you know, and all this stuff, you know, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I get that, but, you know, just like the county highway right now, in my opinion, they could use that $500,000 totally. I mean, can you see where I'm coming from? And that's not a gamble.
That's why you gave them $500,000.
I know, but I mean, the extra $500,000. I mean, they could use another $500,000 for more equipment and stuff like that and perhaps seal and chip in a road here and there. I mean, I just, that's not a gamble, that's moving that $500,000 and making it work right now. See what I'm saying?
But this, once again, this is making, this is doing stuff right now. This is finding out if we can do...
It's finding out, but what if we find out we can't? See, that's where I'm saying it's a gamble.
And then we're chipping and sealing roads again in five years, so.
Well, I mean, that's stuff we can do right now. I mean, can you see that, maybe, that side in the angle where?
Well, I can see what you're talking about, but I'm still, I'm kind of, kind of, I'm like Ray. We don't know if we don't try. And it's not $500,000, but the RDA is going to help us out.
This, what it is, is what, 200, you said?
The RDA is probably going to be about, they're going to give us $250,000.
$250,000, so.
So we could still use the $250,000 somewhere else?
Sure, sure.
And it may not cost $500,000, no, it's just a number they had on paper. That's why I was curious, at what point will we see, would we maybe be able to get a quote, we'll see.
They're working on it.
Yeah, it's only going to cost $310,000.
But I still, I like what Pam had to say too. I mean, that makes a lot of sense. The Jefferson proving ground, from what I know of it, and I know a little bit about it, is in terrible condition for a lot of, a lot of stuff to be done.
Well, nobody's going to move into one of the buildings, they're going to tear down those...
Right, right, but that's, but are they going to, are they going to make...
Well, I will say the recycling center is a fabulous job.
Yes, I mean, there's things that, there's victories, but they're small. And I'm just saying, are they, are we going to, are we going to throw all, all at it at this? Or do we want to go on another angle with maybe economic development? Where, you know, we would try to bring a facility here.
Well, I mean, I would point to the years that we tried that and what happened.
Do you feel like this would fall under the economic umbrella?
Once again, I mean, we're kind of hitting a point here because we've never had someone at the railroad that wanted to do anything but park cars. And Adam is, is ready to do something. I mean, he was like, wow, you want to do that? I'm willing, let's, let's talk. So if they can bring stuff in either from people or take stuff from and deliver it, I mean, realize, you know, he goes, if the railroad goes to North Vernon and what lines he on? Well, he's on CSX. Where's he going there? Anywhere he wants. So, I mean, making that connection is, is pretty huge. Once again, we think, you know, what happened in River Ridge? Well, they had the East End Bridge, they had, you know, Interstate. Well, like this, once again, that's what the study should help identify. Is this 71 to 74 connector going in? Think about how close we could be to those and then off to wherever. Does, you know, people tired of depending on someone else, some company tired of depending on someone else to move things and now they have the ability to do it all their own? Again, Amazon has said that, will they do it? I don't know. But usually what they put out there, they're testing the waters to see what's going to happen, so.
In the class I took at Purdue Road School, also on electric cars and airplanes and hover vehicles, is Interstate's no big deal anymore. You don't have to worry about Interstate comes through your town. feasibility study, will that work? Because I told him what we were thinking about. You don't think about Interstate no more? He said, that's with 20 years from now? He said, how far are you projecting your comprehensive study? And that's what we're trying to do, trying to project a 20, 25 year ahead for our next generations here. Because the hover vehicles are coming, they're already out in California, you've seen them, they already tested them. They were on the news the other night. I thought, saw them at Purdue Road School, I'd see them in three or four years, they're flying. People, 300 miles up there in California, that's where they're coming. So that's what we're looking at, is the comprehensive plan that we put together. We have to, we need to do these kind of studies to make... Jefferson County's had comprehensive plans before, never went anywhere. They sat on their shelf down there at the courthouse, ended up, yeah, yeah. We're trying to, we're trying to put wheels on these comprehensive plans for our county, for my grandkids, my great grandkids, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm...
It's not for us, it's for the next generation down the road.
It's not going to do anything for me right now, you know? If I felt that way, go home, sit on the couch.
Well, if somebody else is going to pay for the study, I don't think there's a problem here.
Yeah.
But if there's a way that we could use that $500,000 right now to give to fire departments, to go to the county highway, to give to...
High five.
Or that, or even possible, possible pay increases because of the rate of inflation. I, I get you, I'm not trying to, to push this as a bad idea. I'm just saying, you could give to the fire departments, you could give more to the water, you could give more to this and that, right now, with that $500,000. And I'd just like you to consider that.
Now, that's all I'm going to say.
Well, I mean, we did, based on the plan, we gave them funds.
Yes, but you could give more too with the $500,000, even if you didn't, you know...
I mean, I think whatever they don't spend on this comprehensive plan, or plan, is going to be left over to reallocate somewhere else.
Exactly.
And the airport, it may be a wash right off the bat, if they run into problems with airspace or whatever. So when you move on, can it be railroad? Could it be a truck ton?
That was what I was going to say.
My only question, do we need a half a million for it? I think that's the question I've had.
I think the amount of money that is going to be...
From people that live in this area and are Jefferson County residents.
I think what he said before is they just set aside, they don't know what it's going to cost. They set aside 500 grand, or 500,000. And then, you know, we may only spend 150,000 of it and then we got 350 to reallocate somewhere else.
Yeah, but you don't know that either.
No, we don't, that's what I said, it's a many.
If everything's a many here, it's a gamble.
I was just going to say, if this moves forward, I'd love to see the agreement be written to where there are circuit breakers in there to where, as soon as a problem is identified, is that a terminal for that option? And it's killed, there's no more spending goes on because I know how consulting firms work. I'm going to work on this piece over here that doesn't, you know, I know is okay and spend a bunch of money, and I'm working on this piece over here and spend a bunch of money and I'll come back. I'm not saying all of them do that, a lot of them, I doubt they do.
Many of them do.
So, I just, you know, obviously airspace is the number one question. Can we get access to the airspace out there? If we can, airfield's done. The other question is, the airstrip itself, can it be refurbished? Based on my limited knowledge and some internet searches, it doesn't look real viable, you know, refurbishing a concrete pad that's that far deteriorated. Not saying that it can't, but we, those would be questions, one and two. I wouldn't want answers by them on the airfield. And if either one of those is a strike, you know, then we move, you know, focusing on rail. I just want to make sure we're not throwing away good money. Because again, I worked for a company that took, took on a consulting firm and after about a month, I got pulled into meetings. And I found out everything that that consulting firm was serving up to the executives was everything that my team and the other teams and the building had been talking about for years and had fed to them to do. So I know, I don't, I don't have a real high liking for consulting firms in general, but I don't want to see us waste money. I don't want to see it poured down the drain. If it's a dead option, it's a dead option, move on to the next one. But, you know, as I told David in my email, you know, River Ridge has been an unprecedented success. But it had a lot going for it before that first shovel dirt was ever turned over. It had I-265, 6571, 64, and a worker base to pull from being right there next to Louisville. Now, I'm not saying that this can't succeed, I'd love for it to succeed. But I just, I don't want anybody to have the false sense that it's going to be the next River Ridge because I just don't see that happening with the roadways. But if it works for rail, that'd be phenomenal. I know we struggle with rail, we pull over stuff out of Chicago. It'd be really nice, you know, pull it through the back door, but, you know, so.
And that's, you know, we have this option with air, rail, and road that, you know, okay, so River Ridge has got roads. Air is fairly close, but not as close. So, I mean, while we don't have the same situation there, we have some other things that they don't. All right, so we're not the fourth fastest growing economic thing in the country? We're 12th? Okay, well, I think we'd still be pretty happy if we could do something that's going to have a positive impact. And, you know, we may not have the base of people here, but if they bring jobs here, what's going to happen? We're going to get some people. People, people have already shown, I mean, you know, some of the other studies we're looking at and especially in the southwest part of the county, people are willing to drive a little further to go to work. You know, those people around River Ridge now are going to be saying, it's just getting too crazy here. I'm going to find a place that's, right? And my hope with a study like that is we've at least taken some steps to plan out some development rather than selling 1.62 acres off this farm and then selling 1.62 acres off this farm and then, you know, I mean, just piecemeal it, so. My thought is, if we don't plan, I, you know, we'll, we'll just continue on. That's why we've done the comprehensive plan. And how we're doing, want to do this one, we want to do some planning. You know, would I be here, would I be there on August 9th asking for $500,000 out of our budget to do a study? Probably not, because it wouldn't happen. But now we have an opportunity to use some of these funds just to see. I mean, we don't know what's, what is the potential out there? We've got our use, we've got people that have done some looks at it, sure. We need to temper it with those, but at the same time.
I remember one of the struggles when we were looking at the jail, possibly using proving grounds to build a jail, was there was no utilities. And so, you know, all the utilities that are out there are barely sustaining what's on the grid. So, you know, just again, keeping things in mind.
Right.
If it did develop, it'd be all new infrastructure out there.
I know, at least I'm not envisioning Jefferson County's paying for those kinds of things.
I would think it would be, I think if you, if they have to have a study so that then turn around and the people that are going to want to invest would come in and put the money in it. I would hope, that would be my...
I'm not planning, I'm not coming to you in years, I don't know if it'll be in years, to ask for money to redo the runway, you know? I'm not, that's, that's, we've got to find someone who's ready to do that. Because if they're tired, we'll begin. You know, I don't know how much FedEx is going to have to pay to their part in redoing the Indianapolis runway, but it's going to be a massive amount. They have their own runway, with just their planes, maybe, you know. And so, maybe it's not FedEx, maybe they're the, too big of a carrier, but...
Yeah, I think, I was in Houston, they resurf, just to resurface, they recently resurfaced the runway at $112 million.
Being open minded, you're not bringing us an invoice today and/or, you know, our transfer allocation slip saying, pay this bill for $500,000 for this study. Obviously, we don't have other, we don't have other things on the table yet, firm areas that we haven't already given some money to. So I guess I'm okay with keeping that line item, not necessarily even labeling it JPG study, but really, this is for economic development as a whole. Knowing that $500,000 can be there for that, knowing within the next 60 days, we may know we're granted $250,000. Knowing the next 60 days, how much it will cost to actually do a study like this, knowing what information we would gather from it. And then we know how much of that $500,000 that we could vote to spend toward, toward it to make up the difference if any. And then the remainder of that money is there for additional economic development projects that still fall under the ARP guidelines and how we're allowed to spend those funds.
Any more discussion? Sure, I think some companies just want to know how much skin you're going to put in the game, you know?
What?
I said, companies want to know how much skin you're going to put in the game.
Right. Right.
You know, that's just, that's what studies are for. It's like we're looking at the treatment train thing right now, and we know what we, we need to do in this county, but we can't do it till we have assessments and studies done.
Studies.
We can't do it. We know what we need, we can't do it till we have that done, and so, this is just a process. It's something new that we...
Ain't check, time to get a chance to progress economic development, I, I, all for it. Can I ask that you would take a, schedule a meeting with Masson Airport?
Yeah, Brent's gonna get it when he gets back, yeah.
Just to rule that one off, if that's what it's gonna be, or to make sure...
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, that might be a viable situation, too. Probably not, but...
Well, I mean, that's something that the study might identify that they can do, there's no sense JPG does it, and we do it at Madison Airport, you know? I mean, the companies that do these studies, they're, they're involved with all these industries, they know what's, what's kinda going on.
Right.
You know, and if you're not, maybe some things that they haven't even thought about is, is a possibility for them, so...
I know that Dick Goodman said they couldn't, their airport wasn't abilities to land large cargo carriers there, but...
Good meeting.
Well, do you need to have some sort of a motion to advertise, or not advertise, or...
I would say only if you want to advertise a dollar amount and what you wanna advertise for, I can do that. But if not, everything else would just remain tailored until more information was available.
Do you have a date on this other, on the 250?
Well, I'll need to get, so, two weeks to a month, I get a harder number from the consultant, and then I can go to the RDA, so here's, here is the numbers, and then we can, I think that would be like, they had a meeting last Friday, and so it would be a month when they have their next meeting where they could provide funds, if that approved, to provide funds for that.
So you guys could hypothetically...
Hypothetically.
Or however you wanna, you guys could advertise whatever dollar amount, knowing that if that money comes through, then you would be decreasing what you actually approve, just like with the budget or anything, if we advertise a higher number, then you could approve a lower amount next month if you chose.
You just couldn't raise it, right?
Right.
We felt confident in July's meeting will have the quote on the tables, exactly what those studies...
Yeah. What?
I'm not sure we're gonna say nothing.
Yes, we do, yeah.
On July's meeting.
I do feel confident.
Yeah.
With the holidays and the...
Going to the other day, but I have to tell my mom the doctor.
I think that's what the study does for, because it should be used for other economic developments too within the county if we didn't...
So, it's not good.
Yeah, I mean, just, just for the sake of time, again, you know, if, if things don't shake out, we don't have the information, we don't vote on it next month or whatever, but I would, I'd make a motion that we advertise $500,000 under economic development, and then that way, if all the information's in, we have everything we need, next month, we can act upon it, and not, you know, not keep the burden out, pushing it down the road. So, again, we don't have, you know, if, if we all come together next month and we decide or something that we don't like, and then we vote it down, but at least the opportunity's there to vote for it next month than not push it to August.
So, can we agree now, instead of having another joint session, can they just be on the agenda for this one item so that it can all be handled at one time?
Sure.
I'll second his, his motion. Go ahead, Bea, we cut it.
All in favor?
Respectfully, Dan.
Right there.
That's all.
I'm moving with your German.
For media in the house. I would honestly look down at the camera, yours.